Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Coliseum of Independence School District 544 to order. Clerk, will you establish a quorum for us, please?
Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knudsen, here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes, here. Steven Vigasa.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to, we need to approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda passes. Moving on, we have a resolution of acknowledgement.
I'd like to offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. Heather and Benjamin Runquist and Fergus Falls Surtoma Club for their donation to the Special Education Department, and Doug Spurling for his donation of a trombone, and Evan and Tanya Westra for their donation of a tenor saxophone to the Kennedy Secondary School Music Department, and Melissa Reese, Stuart Schiser, and Jamie Anderson for their donations to the Otter Angel Account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for their student meals. I think that's Sheiser. And also a sincere thank you to the Fergus Falls 544 Education Foundation who generously awarded nearly forty-six thousand dollars in grants to the Fergus Falls School District and to the local branch of Affinity Plus Federal Credit Union for providing lunch to staff on Monday, October fourteenth.
Do I have a second on that resolution?
One second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Motion or resolution carries.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, we have with us some guests for to talk about the June two thousand nineteen Europe trip review and also talk about the June twenty twenty-one Europe trip request. And we have Randy Hansen, Lori Roder, Sam King, and Will Palowski here. Welcome.
Great, thanks. So I'm just gonna give a quick recap and then I'm gonna turn it over to the students because it's, we do the trip for them, so I just want you to get their feedback on it. So first of all, we were on a fifteen day tour of Europe. Two of those were flight days, but we still managed to get three days in Rome, two days in Florence, where we stopped at the San Giugno. I was gonna make sure I pronounce this right. San Giugniano. If I said Italianate, then it sounds right. Where had the, that had the world's best gelato, so we stopped there. And then we also stopped on Lake, at Lake Como in northern Italy on our way to Switzerland, so those were a couple side trips. And then we spent two days in Switzerland, three days in Paris, three days in England, where we went to Stonehenge this time and Salisbury. And then we got in a plane and flew back home. So right now, though, like I said, I wanna turn it over to the students and let you get their perspective on this trip. So Sam and Will, you wanna take over?
Well, I'm Sam.
I'm Will.
And well, we started off in Rome, which was a nice time. And it was a really relaxing day and we went to the beach a little bit. And it was nice to get off the plane, just relax and decompress for a little bit before getting right into everything. And it was a lot of walking from there on. And then in Florence, so we spent a few days in Rome. And then from there, we went to Florence, which we saw, we went to like this big plaza and had a lot of statues of like gods and goddesses. And like, it was nice like knowing like what they're, like who they were and tell like a little history of them. And then...
Yeah, Rome for sure was really cool and just Italy in general because especially with myths and legends, we saw the Titans from like Roman mythology and Greek mythology and it all just kinda came together and it was really cool to see like it actually there and yeah.
And then like in Florence, we saw the Gates of Paradise, which we had learned about in Western Civ. And then, then Florence, how far is it?
Florence, not as much. But for me, Rome was probably my favorite part of the entire trip because just everything there was so cool. And the culture shock just from America to Rome was probably the biggest I got in the entire trip. And I just love seeing everything in Rome. That was definitely the, my highlight, but.
And then after that, we went to Switzerland. And it was a very different atmosphere compared to Rome. It was a lot cooler, a lot like more relaxing. But it was still like, it was like the same energy. Just like you're in such a foreign place and with like people that you know, like a large group that you know. And it's a good experience to like, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and Switzerland for a lot of people was probably their favorite spot too because it's something we in Minnesota don't really get with seeing all the mountains and just the whole vibe there was completely different from Rome as well. And it was really, it was really, really cool. And then from Switzerland, we moved up to Paris. Spent a couple days there and got to see Versailles. What was really cool about Paris was you saw a lot of the Titans with Western Civ. Especially because in Western Civ, we really just finished talking about Paris. So it was really cool, like you saw everything that you talked about in Western Civ. And that was definitely a highlight there. What do you think?
Uh, it was kinda like to go on with that, like you would see somewhere and you would like, it was cool to think like, hey, we don't like that this happened here. And to like be able to tie like historical events with places that you were seeing in real life.
And then getting to London, I mean, that was, it was interesting because I wasn't, I was surprised at how, how much at home I felt in London almost with, because it felt very American almost. But at the same time, it was still a little bit different, but it was overall really cool as well.
Yeah, yeah. Like Will said, it was, it felt very like, like home, but it was still like you knew, you were like across, you were across the sea. And everything was so different, but it was a nice change of pace for like that last pit stop before coming home.
I don't have anything else to add. Well, thank you for your time.
Order's wait, you're not leaving yet. You get questions? Questions from the board?
So in Rome, you said that you had the biggest culture shock. So what was that? What was, what shock did you have?
I mean, just everything really, like the whole, like I remember it was so hot. First of all, I wasn't, I mean, I knew it was gonna be hot. And then the whole like traffic situation there, that's something that'll always stick out to me, is how hectic the traffic is. And then just, there were a bunch of like people on the streets trying to sell you things and that's something I'm not used to at all. And the food was just amazing and everything about it.
And even the language barrier, like I remember we went to lunch and we were trying to order and it was such a struggle to order because they don't, their first language is Italian. So you have to like, it's such a different experience to, from ordering like at Perkins or Applebee's or something to a restaurant in Italy because you really have to point like at the menu to make sure like, because you wanna know what you're getting. But it's such a different experience, even on such like a, yeah.
Did you, if you studied French then, like were you able to use in Paris?
No.
Could you get what you ordered?
Yes.
Did you like what you ordered?
Um, so the, did you go to the Colosseum while you were there? Did you just envision all that people getting shredded by the tigers? Lions and tigers and better. Yeah, cool.
Uh, did you meet any interesting people that would stick out from the trip that you would say?
I really liked our tour guide. All our tour guides were just amazing for the catacombs. Just, uh, the one we had for Versailles was really good as well. Eiffel Tower was good. I think there was one in, oh, the one we had in London was also good as well. And there were, and just our overall tour guide, also phenomenal.
Yeah, they're all really nice and knew what they were talking about and pretty eccentric about what they were talking about, seemed to enjoy what they were doing.
So like in, in London, did you do, pick off like the main Big Ben and changing of the guards and all the, just the routine stuff? Or did you do something a little more unusual?
Um, in London, we did, well, we weren't able to do Big Ben because it's under construction really, but we were able to go to the London Eye. And that was, that was awesome to see like all of London. And then we also did a Jack the Ripper tour or Harry Potter tour. Those are cool. And then we also got to see Wicked, so.
How did you travel from each point? Did you take a train or did you fly or?
Um, bus, for most part it was a bus. But from Paris to London, it was a train.
And of course I gotta ask you, what was the most interesting thing you had hate?
We had, it was, oh, what's it called? It's liver. Is that what?
I can't remember.
It was liver. I forgot what it's called.
Foie gras in Paris?
Trape?
Cote.
Cote, foie gras?
Do you remember what it was?
I don't remember having liver.
Maybe it wasn't liver. It was, it was veal, that's what it is. It's not liver. I mean, yeah, I had just never had it and I had known a few other people who had never had it and it was an interesting thing to eat.
Um, for me, I can't really think of anything that sticks out that I hated. I don't know, I enjoyed everything, so. Gelato was really cool. Gelato was awesome.
Great.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Disappointed they didn't try to ask Cardo. Um, I was actually not on the trip that Lori just took. I went with her on in two thousand seventeen, similar trip, couple different spots, so. And in talking with Lori during that trip and this last trip, she's like, hey, would you like to maybe take over and be the person in charge? And so slowly but surely, she twisted my arm. And so I thought, sure, we'll, we'll see how this works. Personally, I've traveled with students before. I've gone to Washington DC a number of times. I've taken eighth graders to Washington DC, so let that soak in for a minute. But, and, and, and so I, you know, I've, I've kinda been there and done that with students and traveling things. So, and, and the company that we were going through again is called EF. They've been doing this forever. I think you have a packet of information. They, they know their stuff. I mean, they, they treated us very well. Couple of snafus on the trip that I was on, they solved pretty quickly. But, you know, just to reiterate something the guy said there is that social studies and literature too is kind of about experiences. I like to kinda, you know, tweak the, you know, the egos of my math colleagues and you can't experience math as easily as you can go and experience the Colosseum and see that, you know. And I tell the kids, we're studying Rome right now. And I said, you walk in there, I mean, you know what you're gonna see, but then you see it and you don't know what you're, I mean, it's amazing. So seeing the kids grow up, you know, uh, you know, like Will said, I just feel at home and he was able to navigate a big city by himself. They just grow up and they're not afraid to get out and go down the street with their friends and get from here to there. They can just navigate a museum and they can order off a restaurant, you know, menu of that, of a language that they don't speak. And they just, you see that over the course of the, of the trip. They just, they just excel. So, um, so it's a, it's a great experience and that's one of the reasons that we'd love to go again. And we're hoping for June two thousand twenty-one. The dates are kinda to be determined because the school calendar is obviously not set. And, but typically the middle of the month, towards the end of the month, after school gets over, there's a few things that happen right away. So we're, we're tentatively like the seventeenth of June through the twenty-eighth, give or takes, has several days. Students that can, are eligible for the trip are the same that it's always been. They need to take either College Western Civilization, which is what I teach, or a Myths and Legends class, which is what Lori teaches. And that opens it up too. It's not just kids taking college bond classes. Myths and Legends is a class that's open to everybody. So, uh, so we get a wide variety of kids that if they wanna go on the trip, they have to take that. The reason we do that is we kinda get to know them. You know, I mean, Fergus is not that big that we don't know students, but we wanna have them in class. We wanna make sure that they have the foundation for, when you go to the Colosseum, this is what it is and this is how it works and those things. So they can, you know, make, make those connections, which is, which is the whole reason we're traveling is cultural experiences and then there's a connection to the things that we've been studying, so. Tentatively, the trip this time, we tried to, you know, Lori's changed it up a little bit every year and EF kinda changes their tours. So tentatively, right now, we're, we're scheduled to fly into London, see the usual stops there, hopefully the British Museum, because I thought that was fantastic when we went. I don't think you guys went to that, did you?
Yeah.
Did you? Yeah, it's, it's fantastic. Tower of London, of course, is a must. Westminster, hopefully. And then this, this trip is, is scheduled to go to Dover Castle. So, uh, which is on the coast and I've never been there. I don't know much about it, but there's also some World War II tunnels that are there, which I don't know anything about, but it looks fantastic. So, uh, so we'll do that. And then take a ferry ride across the English Channel to Calais, France. And then from there, we'll bus over to Normandy. And that was one of the things I was really hoping to schedule was Normandy. You know, I've been there once, not with students, and just it was such a moving experience. And teaching American history, see the picture of these guys coming to shore is pretty amazing. So that's gonna be one of the places we're gonna stop for sure. And then it's off to Paris to do the usual things there, the Louvre Museum, walk by Notre Dame while they fix it. And Versailles, take a trip up to Versailles, which again is one of those things you just have to see in your life. That's just amazing. Eiffel Tower, obviously. Then we take a train overnight from Paris to Florence, Italy. Basilica Santa Croce, the Accademia Gallery where Michael Angelus David is. I mean, it's just the Renaissance one-on-one there. So they just walk around here, just hit with all sorts of art and history there. And then it's off to Rome to do the Forum, Colosseum, Vatican City, Sistine Chapel, all that stuff. So we really try to, you know, hit the main things that the kids wanna see. Knowing, we tell them going in, you're never gonna see everything that you want. This is a taste, you'll get an experience, then go back and, and see things on your own speed, but. Like any travel, you know, things are, are not cheap. And the price right now is, is in the ballpark of forty-six hundred, which covers everything, flights, meals. I think the kids are kinda on their own for like lunch snacks once in a while. But flights, hotels, the hotels are very good, quality hotels. Flights are good, major carrier airlines. They treat us well with tour guides. So you can't really do a tour on your own for like that and see that many things. So it, it is expensive, but we try to pitch it to the students now knowing that we're going in two thousand twenty-one. So if, you know, I've had students that have worked and paid off, you know, chunks per month. Every family's a little bit different how they do that, so.
Excuse me, Randy. With that, the, the company has a bunch of different types of payment plans, right?
They do, yeah. So you can pay, you know, less than you bill for every month or next month, whatever. And so, and we do do a little bit of fundraising, but fundraising is, I don't know, it's kind of a double edged sword. I mean, there's lots of that going on, but it seems like it's, you know, two or three people take advantage of it and it's, it's a lot of extra work. So there's a few things, we'll do the service food receipts and stuff and a few other small things, but no major huge ones. So it is kind of on the onus of the students and the parents to figure out how that works. So, so yeah, questions for the board?
How many kids go on the trip again?
You had, well, when I went in two thousand seventeen, we had close to, we had about twenty-five-ish if I remember right.
Yeah, thirty-two last time.
Yeah, and so this would be kids that would be currently tenth graders or eleventh graders. They would be eligible to go on the trip, so. So you have to be a junior or senior to go on.
Who else is planning to go with you as a chaperone?
Well, as of right now, it's just Lori and I are kind of taking the lead on it. And then depending on how many students we get, we'll add. My, my goal is always to add teachers. You know, parents are great, but parents added a little extra dimension that I wanna, I want my other social studies teachers to experience some of the things that haven't been there. And then we kind of, you know, see with the, with the rest of the teachers, if there's other people that are involved. Because, you know, teachers know kids, we're in the kids business and so it's, they know how to travel and do those things.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, half this semester. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next report, we're gonna ask from Kirby Anderson, 544 Education Foundation and Finance.
Yes, on the 544 Education Foundation. Last three months, we've talked a little bit about all the fundraising that's been going on. The Legends Golf Tournament was in July and the in-service catering that we did, the Otter Pride Night, and most recently the Distinguished Alumni and Hall of Fame banquet. So a lot of money being raised. This month, we're gonna talk more about money going out. We had forty-six thousand dollars in grants that went out just recently. And that's, I think there was a news release just in the last two or three days. I think it was in our inbox. So there was probably twenty, twenty, twenty or so grants totaling forty-six, forty, almost forty-six thousand dollars. Over nine thousand dollars to improve the weight room. Over seven thousand dollars for thirty-four Chromebooks in one of the science classes. Over six thousand dollars, almost seven thousand dollars for the Cleveland Steam team. Almost four thousand dollars for twenty Chromebooks at Kennedy Secondary here. So, so it's just a mix. It goes, you know, from, from those big numbers, they even down to three hundred bucks to, to put some seat sacks in the third grade classroom. So there's, it's all over the gamut as far as, as dollar amounts. There also was a fairly large number of classroom wish lists that were, that were met. Most of those were through individuals or through businesses. And then Jeff, are you gonna talk about, about the deal today with Affinity?
I am.
Okay, so that, I'll let Jeff talk about that. That was a big deal today. So, and, and part of that was a check that they made, that they donated to the foundation. So it's all about Jeff report that in his, in his report. Other things going on, there's, all school reunion is currently scheduled for June eleventh and twelfth of two thousand twenty-one. So that's one of the things coming up in the future. That's about it on the, on the 544 Foundation. On the Finance Committee, we did have one Finance Committee meeting and we just did some preliminary discussions related to the, to the bus contract. And I think more details to follow on that later. There's nothing really happening there right now. We just got familiarized with what's, what's there and what's, what's, what's out there and what sort of options are. And so no action needed in that. So that's where we're at with that. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Kirby? Thanks, Kirby. Melanie Cole, Special Ed Co-op, Region One and Activities.
Activities has not met, so nothing to report there. The Special Ed Cooperative met today and we begin our meetings with a report from the Director of the Cooperative. And today Shannon Erickson talked about the audit, that went well. And that they do site visits to each district to see, just to make sure that the Special Education Services are meeting the needs of all the member districts and just staying connected like that. We had a little presentation on Autism Spectrum Disorder, which is increasing in frequency or on the term about maybe just increasingly identified and, you know, how that goes. But, so I had a report how Bart Fisher is doing and she does the services for the cooperative outside the Fergus School District and has forty-four, forty-two identified children that she's been working with. So she just reported that it's continuing to increase and, and she only sees that going up. And then, and then the other, we did personnel moves and then the Director endorsed that we joined the Minnesota Rural Education Association and that was a decision we made to, to join so that we can have advocacy for all things special ed down at the legislature. So another lobbying force. And then for Region One Board, we had a couple months without a meeting and so we met with the big review of bills late last month and looked at staffing changes, which is a constant lately with Region One because some of the mature staff have left. And the Director noted that synergy kinda got off to a tough start at the beginning of the school year and I think maybe we experienced some of that. Just a lot of additional school districts came on and then, like I said, both the staffing changes. So typically they're on top of their game and hopefully the difficulties will be erased. But that was, oh, and then we reviewed our audit that, for the cooperative and that continues to maintain a strong, steady balance, so. Nothing too out of the ordinary, a lot of normal stuff for both of the boards.
Any questions for Melanie? Thank you, Melanie. Missy Hermes, Staff Development and Curriculum Review.
All right, Staff Development met last Monday, that would be October seventh. And I think that pretty much all of the budget for this year has been allocated now for staff to attend training and so. And we're gonna continue to meet though. I think that committee is going to really work hard to update the requirements and so on for allocating funds in the future. The other things that were talked about were what might be presented and how it's going to work for the January in-service. So already thinking ahead to that training for teachers and staff in January. And then the Curriculum Review, we meet on October twenty-first, so that is next Monday.
Any questions for Missy? Thank you, Missy. Natalie Knudsen, Wellness Policy and Buildings and Grounds.
The Wellness Committee met two weeks ago and they rolled out a Wellness Challenge to employees and staff. I think that went out last week. And I believe Jen continues to kind of do those things throughout the year. Now they receive some grant funding to help with some incentives and try to do some fun things. The Lance in the cafeteria and support of the other cafeteria staff here at KSS in the elementary schools continue to keep driving healthier options into the program. He presented a plan of some revamping and restructuring here at KSS and some ideas on being able to deliver fresher food to the elementary schools. So I think we'll continue to see that evolve throughout the school year. So I'll be interested to hear again from him at our next meeting in November. And then Walk to School Day, I believe was September fourteenth. And I'm not sure how many people actually walked to school, but I know that was being promoted as well, so. And then Buildings and Grounds and Policy have not met, so.
Any questions for Natalie? Thank you, Natalie. For my reports, Lakes Country Service Co-op Board, we met in September. So it was a regular, regular meeting. But there is one thing I just wanted to talk about, just because we talked about MREA. And that's cooperative facilities and having lease levy authority. And one of the things that I think when you're rural Minnesota or greater Minnesota and those that are in the metro, seven county metro area is that there's a, sometimes there's gonna be things that there's a big difference between the two and the authority that boards have and school districts have for leasing authority. And this is one issue where there is a huge difference. So just for a medium total lease levy, and this is, you say your regular lease levy and also your intermediate lease levy. When you put that together, the seven county metro area has eighty-eight dollars and sixty cents per student that they can lease on cooperative. And in greater Minnesota, we get seven dollars and thirty-five cents. And so here's a big, big difference. And, and so one of the things that MREA is going to be asking legislators as they come back here is on that issue, is to make it more equitable and the authority for boards to work within school districts. So our hope is, is that, is that that, that amount will rise in greater Minnesota and be more equal to the seven county metro area, so. And that was just one, there's many things that the Minnesota Rural Education Association, MREA talked about, but that was one main thing that with Lakes Country Service Cooperative that they just brought up. So hopefully again, that something will happen out of that. So out of that meeting, that's what happened there. And then for Minnesota High School League, they met Thursday, October third. They, their lobbyist shared, and this is kinda interesting, shared the information on the Minnesota Supreme Court ruling that determine coaches are not public figures. So they are not public figures. So I'm not exactly what that all has, you know, but that was just a ruling that... Does that have to do with slander and libel then? I think it must have to be do something to that. And then it talked about just support and protection for high school coaches continues to be critical, including good evaluation systems. And I think it was just one of those things, so. So it was just kind of interesting. And I agree with you, I think it has to do with public slander and stuff like that. So they do have some power to sue somebody who... Must be, that, yeah, so. Says something bad about it.
Says something bad about them.
Kind of an interesting, like I said, it was just an interesting thing that they talked about, so. The other thing is that they mentioned that the legislative session begins September, February 11th, there we go, 2020. So I know that's a little ways away, but that is coming up. The other thing they talked about at this meeting was their strategic planning. And one of the items I just wanted to bring up was item number four, which they talked about. The Minnesota High School established the technology system and structures to support the needs of students, schools and communities. So that is one of their strategic plans and directions to the staff, and so we will see where that goes. So that's something that they had talked about. The other thing is they talked about a little bit is also, as we've, we've mentioned before, is their shortfall in funding. And as part of the league strategy is they are looking and exploring options of charging admission fees or entry fees for state tournaments that currently do not generate any revenue. And so that's just an exploratory part right now, and that will continue on as they try to, again, make up for that shortfall in their budget. And the other thing that they talked about, and something that we do participate in, is that they recommend support of the Inside Out initiatives and working with the Minnesota Vikings. And so we will see how that comes about, so, with, with the coaches and with the high school, so.
What is that?
Inside Out is, is with basically why we play. So it's just, again, kind to have the whole student and what co-curricular activities are all about and trying to bring that all together. And so kind of a bigger picture of co-curricular activities, so. And that is what I have to report.
Any questions? Steve Biggessa, Legislative Liaison, in the meeting conferred.
Get off easy on my reports past a few times, but the, on the legislative side of things, the MSBA, which is Minnesota School Board Association, is kind of gearing up for what they're going to be lobbying for next year. And they polled, they had 11 meetings across the state, Fergus was one of them. And basically just kind of surveyed what, what's most important to you, and it's mostly the same stuff as last year. We're looking for a 1% increase in the funding formula. Our districts also, blanking on the second one. The funding form, sorry, the special ed.
Cross subsidy.
Thank you, wow. Cross subsidy for.
Staff, there is a meat and cheese tray in the lounge from Premier Meat.
If you need some meat and cheese. Head down.
Especially if you need wine, that's, that's out there.
Anyways, the special ed, the, the special ed funding gap is a big deal. And last year, we stopped the bleeding, you know, stopped the, the gap from expanding, and now we're, you know, they're going to be lobbying to close that gap and have the government pay their part. And then safe schools is always on top of mind, giving schools more power to, you know, seek funding for improving their schools in terms of safety. So, but that is about it. They're just, I mean, nothing has happened. I mean, and I try not to report on things that haven't happened yet because I don't want to give a bad, you know, impression that it's going to. But that's kind of what they're going to be looking to lobby for this year. And that's all I have for legislative. The Meet and Confer Group has not met or conferred for a while. I think in November, we might be meeting and confering, so that is all I have.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Superintendent Drake.
All right, good evening. I just want to say thanks to Angela Erickson for arranging the Farm to School event at McKinley. We had a local orchard based out of Alexandria, bring sweet 16 apples for the kids to, to take a crunch out of. And Otto, the otter was there, and the farmer was there of the orchard, and it was just a really nice event and helped grow awareness for where our food comes from and it supported the local agriculture industry. Also, a big thank you goes out to Mary Madison for her work in organizing the West Central Minnesota College and Career Expo. Almost 900 students attended, including our Fergus Falls students, as well as several other area schools that participated. Our students also visited M State for a tour. And then the keynote address had to do with the Seven Pillars for Success in looking at post-secondary options after graduating from high school. On the staff development piece, the only other thing that I will add to that is that there's been a growing concern from the teachers about a new licensure, relicensure requirement that has to do with cultural competency. And the state, right now, it's kind of set up as an eight-hour training session that you need to do. We are working with Troy Anderson out of Lakes Country Service Co-op. This is an area of expertise and interest for Troy. So we think that we're going to have two options available for our staff that need that, both of which I think will be really well done coming up in the middle of January. So other than that, there's only really a couple options throughout the whole state. So it's really not very convenient for people that need to get that relicensure credential checked off before, before the end of June. Then I also want to just close by thanking the teachers for the relationship building they're doing with our parents and guardians and students during parent-teacher conferences. It's a great opportunity to connect with our community and appreciate all the work they do.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake? Thank you. Okay, moving on to our general consent items. We have a mess for the September 23rd Board Meeting, Bills and Treasures Report, Kirby Anderson.
Yes, we did, Melanie Cole and I met with Mark before this meeting, and, and we have $9.8 million in the bank right now. We just downed about a million dollars from last month. One of the quirky things that happens, because this is about as late as we can have a board meeting, and the 14th, is that a number of companies that we deal with have sent us two invoices in that time period. So, so our, our bills are not doubled from what they normally are, but they certainly are significantly higher than what they normally would be. So we, so we reviewed that, we went through and highlighted several a little bit. Had some money going on, quite a bit of money going on for the, for the acquisition of the historic building. And I think that was in the news last, last month, but I don't remember exactly what day it was, but we had gone through and accomplished all of that financing. Some of the other significant ones are, but Schneid Music, we've gotten wine instruments, looking at projectors. Looked through some pretty good investment in a chiller with one of the local plumbing companies. So we kind of hit just about everything, but didn't really see anything out of the ordinary. Just, it's always a learning experience for me, especially in the first year doing this, how, how this all works. I think one of the more significant ones that I saw was just about $40,000, the way to spend on fixing these coiled doors.
Coiling doors.
Coiling doors, $40,000 because of a code change, a building code change, where you have to put motors in and make them automatic, and some of them are manual. And so, you know, like Mark says, you don't realize how many coiling doors you have in the system until you have to go and fix everyone who's bringing them up to the new code. So there was, yeah, about $40,000 left for that.
So what do they want, automatic instead of manual?
In case of a fire, they all close. You don't have to be standing there and chanking them down.
Okay, okay.
They close.
So it's just one of those that, at the beginning of the year, when we budget, that it's not really something that anyone ever foresees, but that's just what happens. So, but yeah, I think everything appeared to be in order. You concur with that, Melanie?
I concur. We ask a lot, ask questions about a lot of inane little bills, and business manager could answer right away.
Sorry, I only had to look one up.
Very good.
Sure, sure. We're going to jump back real quick for our personnel, just for Superintendent Drake, just for more financial reports, so.
Yeah, I was checking items off as other board reports kind of addressed them, and I missed a really important one that I wanted to make sure I caught tonight. So Affinity Plus Federal Credit Union, they're based out of St. Paul, and our local branch submitted a proposal, basically to pay it forward to an organization in the district that they appreciate and think does great work, and that happened to be our school district. And so there were probably seven representatives from Affinity Plus. And Mindy and I met them at the preschool Heritage Building this morning, where they presented a check to cover all the classroom wishlist items that hadn't been funded yet. And then they very generously provided lunch for all of us in the district. And, and we will partake in some of that that's left tonight at the conclusion of the board meeting. But really, really wanted to express our sincere gratitude and thanks and appreciation for all they did and for thinking of us and recognizing us in that manner.
And it was a $7,500 check to the foundation. And they do this on October 14th because it's Columbus Day, the banks are closed, so they are taking their day off to come and do this, which is even more special.
Okay, we're going to move back into our general consent items. So we have personnel, Melanie, thank you.
Okay, we have a few changes. We're getting into the school year, and then that always kind of triggers some, some staff changes. So with that, we have some certified staff hires. Lana Orin, part-time adult basic education instructor. Kristen Tool, additional 10 extended contract days, which will total 25 per year, and that's effective for this 1920 school year. Support staff resignations, we have Linay Weinrich, special ed para. Anna Anna Refwitch, computer lunch cafeteria worker. Support staff retirement, Nancy Anderson, secretary over at Community Education Office. And we have a resolution a little bit later on on Nancy's work here. For support staff hires, we have Trista Hagan, a part-time ECEPA. Bo Mathis, special ed paraprofessional at KSS. A little bit further down in, under new business, I'll be requesting additional special ed para due to adjustment with student enrollment, along with another hire. And then Rachel Venberg, she'll be providing non-public health services for the 2019-20 school year to our non-public schools. We do this through our non-public pupil aid, and she has been providing us services for the last few years to those schools. So I'd recommend these personnel changes for our board approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the general consent items? So, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? General consent items passed. There is no old business. Moving on to new business, we have the 2019-20 Assurance of Compliance With State and Federal Law Prohibiting Discrimination. And that was sent in our packet. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number two is the Resolution on Retirement of Nancy Anderson, whereas Nancy Anderson began her employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in January 2015, and whereas Nancy has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past five years, and whereas Nancy has done an excellent job as Secretary for the Community Education Program in our district. And now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Nancy Anderson for her five years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will somebody offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
Oh, offer resolution and move for its adoption.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Steve? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Melissa Hermes, yes. Stephen Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson, yes. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Item number three is the Facilities Agreement for the Connection of the Fergus Falls Community Arena and FFHA Strength and Performance Center by and between the Fergus Falls Hockey Association, Independent School District 544, City of Fergus Falls and Fergus Falls Port Authority, effective 10/14/2019. Mark, do you want to speak on this just real quick?
Sure. You may, you may remember from a previous school board meeting, we had a ground lease agreement that we approved. The ground lease allowed the Youth Hockey Association to build on school grounds, which, right next to the arena, which is also on school grounds. The arena is leased to the Fergus Falls Port Authority, and the Port Authority has the City of Fergus Falls managing the, the arena. Youth Hockey wants to build a, a small structure on the side for putting in their hockey treadmill and doing a shooting area and that kind of thing. And in order to facilitate that, like I say, we did a ground lease before to do that. Now this agreement here tonight is to allow a walkway to go between the arena and the training facility. So everybody's okay with having a door separating the two, but now the kids don't have to go outside and back in. You just go through a walkway. So that's what this agreement is about, is saying yes to a walkway.
Okay, was somebody for that motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Can you remind me again, who's paying to heat?
They, they had planned originally to purchase some heat through us. But we, they, we since have found out that they could not do that because we don't turn our boiler on until it gets to about 50 degrees. So instead, they're going to tap into our gas line, we'll put a meter in there, and they'll pay for, reimburse us for the gas that they buy from us.
The Hockey Association.
The Hockey Association.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number four is the Additional of One FTE Special Education Paraprofessional and a, and a hire of Melissa Moore as a special education paraprofessional, effective 10/21/2019. And do you want to cover any more about it later, that's, you mentioned it?
I mentioned it, it's just regarding the student enrollment and the need of services due, due to that enrollment.
With that, do I have somebody that offered that motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Following this school board meeting, we will go into a work session to talk about staffing, billings and grounds update, and strategic planning. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, October 28th, at 5:15, right here at the Otter Community Room. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second?
All second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.